Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this public hearing to order and recognise that we were joining this hearing from areas throughout the traditional territories of the Tishat and Hoopacashet First Nations. My name is Penny Cody. I'm the Director for Sprout Lake Electoral Area. And I'd like to introduce you to the ACRD planning staff. Mr Mike Girk, General Manager of Planning and Development. Mr Alex Dyer, Planning Manager. Amy Anaka, Planning on the screen, there you go. And Cathy MacArthur, Planning Assistant also. Great. There she is. Thank you. This hearing is being electronically used in is being held electronically using Zoom. It's being recorded and is live streaming on our website. So you will be able to see this later and people can look at it that aren't able to attend today. So it is being recorded. And would staff please provide direction and instruction on how to participate in this hearing?
Happy to do, thank you. And thank you to everybody for participating here tonight, both in the room and online. If you are watching the live stream on the website right now and wish to join the meeting, the details on how to connect can be found in the Zoom meeting invite document that's linked on the ACRD webpage. We just want to start by quickly highlighting some of the tools in Zoom that will help you participate and talk about our process here, our hybrid process now with both remote participation and in person. So if you are participating online, you have the option to either turn on or off your video or mute or unmute your audios so other participants can see you and hear you. We just ask you to keep your audio muted at all times unless you're asked to speak. Just to help with reducing the background noise and allowing us all to hear the presentations. There will be an opportunity to speak after staff introduce the OCP Amendment Bylaws and summarise the agency and First Nations referrals that we received. So when the Chair will call upon any members of the public to speak or comment on the bylaw, we ask that you either put your hand up or call out that you would like to speak. Once you've been recognised by the Chair or by staff, we ask that you state your name and address, followed by your comments or your question. So if you are participating online, you would unmute yourself. And if you're here in person in the boardroom, you'll hit the button on the microphone in front of you. I also want to highlight that there's chat feature access from the controls on the screen. If you'd like to make any comment or ask any questions as we go along, all comments will be addressed by staff during the public hearing. So feel free to add anything there as you're thinking of it. These comments will be brought forward when the Chair asks for public comments. There will also be a final opportunity prior to the end of the public hearing to ask any final questions or make any final comments on the amendment by law. And I just want to reiterate again that public hearing is being livestreamed on the website and a recording will be made available following the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So the subject of this hearing is bylaw P1443. This bylaw is an official community plan amendment to the existing Sprout Lake Official Community Plan bylaw P1310. If you have any questions or comments about any other related topics, I would ask you to contact the Regional District Staff after this public hearing has been terminated. Would staff now read out the notice of the public hearing?
Thank you, okay. The public hearing for residents and property owners within Electoral Area D Sprout Lake will be held at Considered Bylaw P1443. This bylaw is an official community plan amendment to the existing Sprout Lake OCP bylaw P1310. As part of the zoning bylaw review project, amendments are being considered to the six ACRD Electoral Area OCPs to align OCP policies and objectives with the proposed updated zoning bylaw available online at wwwacrdc.ca/eventsreview. The public hearing will be held by the Director for Electoral Area D, the Alternate Director or the Chairperson of the Regional District. The Board Resolution making this delegation along with bylaw P1443, which includes a detailed list of all amendments to the Sprout Lake OCP is available for review online at wwwacrdc.ca/events/5-12-2022. This public hearing will be recorded and livestreamed on the ACRD website. Planning staff are available to answer questions in person through email or by phone during normal office hours, 8pm or 12pm, Monday through Friday, from November 23rd to November 2nd, December 5th, 2022, excluding statutory holidays. Now, anyone who feels their interest in property will be affected by the proposed bylaw will be afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard. And options to participate in the public hearing include in person in the ACRD boardroom, by electronic means using Zoom video conferencing or teleconferencing, and/or submitting written correspondence to the ACRD. If you wish to participate in the public hearing electronically or by phone, full instructions to do so are available online at wwwacrdc.ca/events/5-12-2022. Or it can be provided by contacting planning staff by email at planning@acrdc.ca or by phone at 2507202700. Written correspondence can be submitted to the ACRD by one of the following methods. A hard copy delivered to the ACRD office in person or by mail to the planning department at the address below. An email sent to planning@acrdc.ca before 4pm December 5th, 2022. Email correspondence will only be considered received if receipt confirmation is provided by ACRD staff. Or a fax sent to 2507231327, again before 4pm December 5th, 2022. And fax correspondence will only be received, will be considered received if receipt confirmation is provided by ACRD staff. And finally, written submissions provided in advance of the public hearing must be received by the ACRD no earlier than 8pm on November 23rd, 2022 and no later than 4pm on December 5th, 2022, to ensure their inclusion in the public record. Correspondence submitted and/or received ahead of the public hearing outside of these parameters will not be included.
Thank you for that. At this time, I'd like to ask for staff for clarification on the ACRD Public Hearing Notification Legal Obligations. The reason why I'm bringing this up is I had many calls today in regard to residents not hearing of any notification.
Sure. Thank you for that, the opportunity. So the notice for this public hearing was advertised in two consecutive issues of the Albany Valley News, those being the November 23rd and the November 30th issues. This is a requirement of the Local Government Act. And we just wanted to highlight that the ACRD Development Procedures bylaw includes statements about that public hearings are governed by the Local Government Act and that the public notice shall be issued in accordance with the requirements of that act. So that's the process that we typically follow. Now, unlike where there is a rezoning application or an OCP amendment application for a specific property, where an amendment by law impacts 10 or more properties that are owned by 10 or more people. So a larger area like this, there is no statutory requirement to mail a notice, to mail the public hearing notice out within the community or to place a sign. Now, having said that, this does not mean that the residents or community associations or the area director cannot share information about an upcoming public hearing within the community. We certainly encourage, you know, additional outreach whenever possible and know when that can be done. But we just want to highlight that has been the practice of the ACRD to advertise and conduct public hearings following the requirements of the Local Government Act and outlined by the ACRD Development Procedures by law. Staff would certainly recommend that any changes to the way that we advertise and conduct a public hearing would be discussed with the Board of Directors and would be applied consistently to all public hearings that we hold. So, and then in addition to the notice being in the newspaper, I would also highlight that the background information, the notice and the bylaws have been posted on the ACRD website since the notice was first published in the newspaper and has been advertised on the zoning bylaw review project website as well. Hopefully that helps and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I know that staff have done a lot of work. It's been years working on the zoning bylaw amendments and review. And this is the OCP bylaw change amendment. And hopefully we have people able to participate that have been following. So at this time, the purpose of this public hearing is to respectfully receive input, written and verbal, from any person who believes that their interest in property is affected by the bylaw. The Regional District will receive full minutes of this hearing before voting on the bylaw. Staff is taking written minutes that summarise the issues raised. Please speak clearly to ensure accuracy. I would ask staff to please introduce the proposal.
Okay, thank you Chair Cody. So bylaw P1443, as you've heard, is an OCP Amendment bylaw to the existing Sprout Lake OCP bylaw P1310, which was originally adopted in 2014. The OCP Amendment by law generally includes updates to align policies and objectives with the draft zoning bylaw that the ACRD is currently working through. As part of the zoning bylaw review project, all six of the Electoral Area OCPs are being amended in the Banfield, Long Beach and the four Albany Valley areas to align policies with that draft zoning bylaw. It is important to highlight first off that the comprehensive rewrite of the ACRD zoning bylaw is not being considered as part of this public hearing and that the bylaw, the updated zoning bylaw, remains in draft form. So any changes to the updated zoning bylaw can still be considered and staff continue to engage with the public, with referral agencies and with the Board members on refining that draft. So we do anticipate that we'll continue to have conversations about that through the end of this year and in the beginning of next year and that the zoning bylaw will be considered first time by the Board in the first quarter of 2023. So this bylaw, bylaw P1443, was given first reading by the Board on April 13th, 2022. The memorandum that was considered by the Board during the meeting and a copy of the bylaw with first reading are available online on the ACRD webpage and in person in the back of the boardroom here. If you're interested, the bylaw provides a line-by-line list of the amendments within bylaw P1443, a consolidated version of the OCP text incorporating the proposed amendments and the updated land use and development peremptory maps are available in the back of the room as well as on the ACRD website. So I just want to quickly highlight the amendments that have been proposed in this bylaw. And like I said, they are included in the paper if you have here, but I just want to kind of run through them individually. So we have added policies or the bylaw proposes to add policies relating to the construction of docks and moorage facilities and included repairing and development peremptory guidelines for the construction of new docks and moorage facilities on the water. The expanded development permit guidelines intend to better align with the provincial regulations and to ensure that potential environmental impacts and water quality impacts are considered prior to the construction of a new dock. So with the guidelines that have been proposed in the bylaw, an assessment for a qualified environmental professional would be required to consider aspects of dock construction that relate to environmental protection. This could include, we have, we have wording in bylaw about it, including the use of stable materials that do not degrade water quality, discouraging the use of styrofoam, which is something we've heard lots about, and the placement of docks in critical fish habitat areas. So I wanted to note that the proposed development restrictions that we talked about lots with community on the size, extent, width of the dock, the setbacks between docks or improvements on a dock, you know, the actual rules about what a dock would look like are not included within the OCP Amendment by law. All of the development considerations for docks and moorage facilities like that would be regulated by the updated zoning bylaw, which again remains in draft form and can be changed with direction from the Board. So the DP guidelines were only intended to consider the protection of the environment and fish habitat and the protection of water quality. As part of the new development permit guidelines, the OCP Amendment by law would extend the riparian DPA into the foreshore by including all land and water within 30 metres of the natural boundary of a major stream or 50 metres from a minor stream measured horizontally in both the upland and the foreshore directions. So the intent of that amendment would be to extend the DP requirements to the construction of new docks and foreshore improvements, as I mentioned. And then finally, on the waterfront, the bylaw would define Sprout Lake as a major stream to extend the riparing and development peremptory area from 15 metres to 30 metres from the natural boundary of the lake. This amendment would not introduce an increased building setback from the lake, but instead aims to expand the protection of the natural environment within the riparing area and to correct the water quality of Sprout Lake, as we've had lots of discussions about in the community. Since the OCP was adopted in 2014, I just wanted to highlight that great Central Lake has always been defined as a major stream with a 30-metre DPA. So moving into the more general policy updates, we, the bylaw would propose to reduce the amount of lot size in the resource use designation from 20 hectares to 16 hectares to align with the resource zoning in the updated zoning bylaw. It would standardise policy wording across all six OCPs where appropriate. It updates the Local Government Act references that are located within the OCP as the Local Government Act has been updated since 2014. It would update Agricultural Land Commission references. Lots of changes have been made with the Agricultural Land Commission Act and their policies over the last number of years, so this will align with that. It includes a statement about the consideration of the housing needs reports, which were reports that the ACRD completed within each of the electoral areas in 2021. Those housing needs reports would be considered in greater detail at a future comprehensive update of the Sprout Lake OCP, but they're certainly referenced in this amended version. We've revised the wording in the definitions to align with the zoning bylaw on some of the key topics such as accessory dwelling units, flood construction level manufactured homes and the differences between mobile homes, luxury homes and things like that, as well as the differences between home occupations and home industry. We've revised the flood construction level guidelines and the natural hazard development peremptory areas to align with the zoning bylaw, which references the 200-year designated flood plain. And we've updated, as I mentioned before, the land use and the development peremptory maps as well. So utilizing our new GIS mapping database within a map format, improved labelling and hopefully improved readability as well. So moving in quickly into the agency referrals and the public correspondence we have received, I will highlight that the referral agency responses received from a number of agencies in First Nations are available, both here in the boardroom and online on the webpage as well. And they will form part of the public hearing report that will be considered by the Board. There are 22 agency and First Nations responses received in total relating directly to the Sprout Lake OCP Amendment bylaw. The agency responses received either noted that they were in support of the bylaw, subject to the reasons outlined in the responses, that their interests were unaffected or that they had no concerns, comments or objections to moving forward with the bylaw. Staff are continuing to engage with these referral agencies where questions have been raised that can be addressed as part of the updated zoning bylaw project, for example, or as part of longer-term discussions about the vision for the big community that will form part of the comprehensive updates that we hope will follow. The referral request that was sent out indicated that if no response was received by the referral deadline, it will be assumed that the agency or First Nation interest in the amendment by law are unaffected. So just to highlight that 16 of the agencies that we've sent referrals to did not respond. Public correspondence, we did receive a number of letters ahead of the public hearing. There are 14 letters of correspondence that were received prior to the hearing about the OCP Amendment by law. 11 of the letters expressed general concerns about the amount of notice given for the public hearing and requesting that additional public consultation be held, expressing concerns about significant changes proposed of the dock construction and the development near Sprout Lake and the need to restrict boat speeds. One of the letters received expressed general support to the amendment by law, noting accountability for environmental protection. And one of the letters asked for clarifying questions about docks and boats. So again, just to highlight, a copy of all of those letters are available in the room here and available online on our website as well and will form part of the public hearing report by the Board. And I know I'm rambling on, but while you still have me, I just want to quickly highlight the consultation that we have undertaken on this project to date. We've talked about what the advertising looked like for this public hearing, but just to reiterate, you know, what brought us to this step in the project. So over the course of the project, we've had a lot of discussions with the community. I think many of you were involved in that. Initial work on this project actually began in 2015 and 2016 with open houses, APC meetings and initial engagement with First Nations. Since 2019, staff have had numerous informative discussions and have been active in leading engagement opportunities with the public, committee members, Board members, First Nations and various referral agencies. There have been 21 open houses across the electoral areas regarding this zoning bylaw review project, most recently April 2022, where we held an online session and in-person open houses held at Sprout Lake Community Hall on April 11th. So each of those open houses included information about the OCP amendments required as part of this project. Highlighting that as well, that there have been 15 advisory planning commission meetings that were held to discuss the zoning bylaw review project and again, where these OCP amendments were considered. Most recently, in June 2022, we last met with the Sprout Lake APC to discuss the project and receive some guidance on it. And then finally, on the public side of things, it was an online survey that was conducted in 2021, which received over 340 responses, many of which included detailed questions and subsequent responses about the zoning bylaw and the OCP updates. One question that we pulled up today that I just wanted to highlight is that survey respondents were asked if they support the proposed OCP updates that add to the, that add the development guidelines for private moorage facilities. And of the 293 respondents that responded, 44% were in support and 37% were not in support. So that, you know, this, this question has been posed to the public numerous times, but that was a good opportunity to get direct feedback on all that. I think that's all I want to say for the public consultation side of things and we're happy to answer questions as we move along and take them down. Thanks, Penny.
Thank you. There was some responses, I'm not sure if you received them, that I saw that were asked to be read out loud. Is this the time to do that?
So our practice is not to read out information. The purpose of public hearing is to, is for the Board to receive information through the Chair. All of the agency comments, all of the written correspondence will form part of the public hearing yet and the entire Board will receive that and review and discuss debate prior to voting on the bylaws or considering second, third reading.
Okay, I just had a question around that because people actually asked to be read out. They couldn't attend, so. Okay, well, I know that that will be in the package for the Board. And I'll stress that the Board will receive all of the minutes going forward. So, okay, at this time, we will now hear representations from members of the public saying that this is a safe, respectful space for you to bring forward your opinions and if you have any interest in this public zoning bylaw, official community plan amendment, I will ask that, please wait until I've recognised you. And if you're sitting with a microphone, you'll have to click so that it's read like mine here and then we can hear you. Please state your name and your address before beginning and we will hear everyone wishing to speak for the first time and then allow for second comments. And what, right now, what we'll do is we'll listen to anyone in the room right now and then we'll go to online. Okay, so. Mr Marley.
Yeah, I'm Red. I'm Mark Marley, 11,000 Central Lake Road. I think I'd like to express I'm disappointed in staff that although policy says you don't have to do mailouts, I think it would be worthwhile that we live in a community where 80% of us or 80% of our population do not live here, especially in the winter. I think it would be more transparent for us to send emails out or some other form of notice than a local newspaper that you don't get in Victoria. Question for staff, does the ACRD have jurisdiction over the water? My understanding is that you do not. I've spoken to staff about float homes before and been expressly told that staff does have jurisdiction over water. So how do we create bylaws dealing with docks when apparently staff or the Board doesn't have jurisdiction over the water? I think extending the, or changing Sprout Lake from a 15-metre to a 30-metre is easily brushed over, but the impact to the homeowner is significant. The cost of QVP reports are expensive and that needs to be considered by staff. And the other question on your 200-year flood plain, which reporter are you using? Is that the new report that the NHC report?
Thank you. I'll ask staff to respond.
Sure, thank you, Mark. The 200-year designated flood plain is from the NHC report. So that, you know, that is the information that we have now and the zoning bylaw currently references a setback that relates to a 200-year flood plain and that the new zoning bylaw will be the same. With respect to regulating water, so we understand that local governments have the ability to regulate the use of the surface of the water. Where local governments don't have authority is in regulating habitable waters and things like that. So that, you know, where we have things like a crown lease, for example, on industrial use on the surface of the water, our zoning applies to those types of things. And the same thing would apply for the placement of a float home or the placement of a dock itself. Float homes are unique in that the building code doesn't apply to them. So there's other issues there that local governments don't have the ability to do, but that is our understanding, at least anyways, right now, that we can regulate the use of the surface.
Thank you. Is there follow-up or I'll?
So with the NHC report being used, has the Board of Directors adopted the NHC report? And rather than just staff implementing it, has it formally been adopted and put in place by the Board?
The Board has not formally adopted it.
So we're going to enforce the documents as we've adopted.
I mean, that, so we, I don't have the zoning bylaw in front of me right now, but it does, it does have a setback above the 200-year designated flood plain already. So we know what that is now and that's information that we know of in the zoning space in the least. So that's, that's what we're relying on, that. In addition to Section 56 of the Big Community Charter, which allows building inspectors to require confirmation that the building can be safe from geotechnical hazards. So I mean, that's, that's where we're at with the flood construction levels. The only amendments that we've proposed in the, in the OCP are to just align the wording with the natural hazard development peremptory guidelines, which typically reference both seasonal flooding and tsunami inundation. So now it references seasonal flooding as shown on the information that we have and then the tsunami inundation zone remains.
So with respect to the zoning and et cetera, Mark, that's not part of this and we can provide some follow-up information for you and the public in general as it relates to the zoning bylaw and the so-called watershed flood management plan that was done. And that's a good question. That, I would just like to address that outside of the scope of the OCP.
I understand that and I believe when it becomes part of the OCP, it becomes part of your policy and therefore is sort of the guide, the guide guiding the zoning by law. You know, it becomes, it becomes a policy within the regional district. So my concern is we're creating a policy on a, on a report that's not adopted, on a report that has a peer review that says it's extremely conservative. And I can certainly say on my behalf, we spent in excess of $25,000 paying to reconsider our private parcel held at Lake City Lake and found that the And found that the NHC report was considerably conservative. So my concern is more for my my neighbors, that is that going to be the case for this probably? I potentially addressed Great Central, but these reports are really expensive and onerous on institutions. So that's all I have at the end of the day, but we can go around in circles on it. So. But again, just to reiterate, my concern is that we're creating a policy that could be extremely expensive to the neighbors and people around electoral area D. And I feel, again, just to kind of finalize, not to take too much time, that this should probably go back to another public hearing, some more community involvement and review, so everybody fully understands the impacts of some of these policies that are being implemented. So and I think a lot of the people that have asked for the meeting to be postponed feel the same. Thank you for allowing me to speak and have your time.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else who'd like to speak?
I would just note, I mean, certainly input, but if people have any questions they'd like or they'd like clarified, we can certainly take this opportunity as well.
Okay, anybody online?
Yeah, just to highlight that, so you have, we have seven attendees on the webinar, and then we have some some panelists as well. So all of the attendees have, we've tried to upgrade you as panelists, but that hasn't worked. The only difference that will be is that you can't turn your video on. So you've all been allowed to unmute yourselves. So if anybody, you know, once the chair calls for you to speak, if you are online, you can unmute yourself, but you can't turn your video on, is what it looks like. So, thank you.
So how will we know if they want to speak? Okay. I see Mr. Mickety, did you want to speak?
You bet. How's everybody doing tonight?
Okay, name and address, please, and then?
Hey, Dale Mickety, nine six four eight Sterling Arm Crescent. One of the questions I have, I have several, but the last meeting that I attended had to do with the boat docks. And it was brought up how onerous the sizing of those docks were. And they were tried to make one size fits all. And it was pointed out by several people that the docks really for the size of boats, you'd have a hard time fitting a fourteen-foot aluminum boat in there and still having a walkway around. Has there been any other consideration in that, or are you guys still going with our same original?
Staff to reply, please.
Sure. Thank you, Dale. The, I mean, we've had lots of discussions about that, for sure. The size of docks and how far they can extend into the lake and where they can be located. All is regulated by the zoning bylaw itself, so those rules aren't in the for Sprout Lake OCP that we're considering here at this meeting, and we have an opportunity to still speak to those. The guidelines we have in the development permit for within the OCP deals with things like the protection of the natural environment and the protection of water quality.
Okay, my next question is you're changing the foreshore from fifteen meters to thirty meters. There are people with existing facilities, structures, what have you, that are within that boundary. Are they going to be grandfathered in, or is it going to be dealt with basis by basis? And pardon me to that question, what happens if in the event of a disaster, natural fire, what have you, that has to get rebuilt? Are they going to be able to rebuild on their same property?
Yeah, thank you. Great questions. Well, so the development permit guidelines intend to deal with new development. So existing development can remain in place, it can be maintained and repaired within that area. It's important to note that the development the development permit area is not a no-build zone, it's not a building setback. So it's not introducing any rule that requires you to build your house or your shop or whatever you want, at least thirty meters away from the lake. What it does is it introduces a zone where if you're building within that zone, within thirty meters of the natural boundary, you do need to engage a qualified environmental professional and apply for a development permit to and then have your development assessed against the guidelines that are in the OCP. So I mean, it adds a bit of process in obtaining a building permit. You have to meet the minimum buildings setbacks to obtain the building permit. If you're within the thirty-meter DPA, you have to obtain the development permit before you get the building permit. But the intention here is strictly to deal with the protection of the natural environment and the protection of the water quality of the lake.
Thank you very much. One last codicil to that. Say a person's on a steep piece of property, and they want to put a funicular down to the lake, and it's going to be within thirty meters. So with proper engineering and applications, that should be able to be dealt with.
You can certainly do that. We've actually seen a couple felt like that where they obtained the development permit. I mean, we've issued, we issue a number of development permits every year for development on the lake. As we've had the fifteen-meter DPA in there since twenty fourteen. So it is a common process for us, and if it's a foreshore improvement or something like a funicular or like an elevator type of use, then there certainly is a development permit process for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, is there anybody else that would like to speak for the first time? Oh, Chris Law, please.
Yeah, Chris Law, one zero six nine three, Tilly Road, Port Alberni. My question is, is these development permits rely on professional reliance? So they rely on a professional writing a report? If, you know, if the public sees that they don't agree with the decision and they're having trouble understanding how this development permit was issued and how a professional signed off in it, are you going to make these professional reports that are required for the development permits available to the public?
So we would rely on our freedom of information and protection of privacy act requirements on that. So we releasing a professional report that is not, you know, that has not been included in public meeting agenda like a public hearing notice or public hearing report or a report that goes through the board has some requirements for of information. And, you know, that might include redacting some of the personal information that's included within that report. And, you know, that's something that we have, we have staff that specialize in, and I would certainly want to deal with that through the FOIP process that we have, rather than just printing out reports and handing them off to neighbors. We certainly routinely field a number of questions about developments at the staff level, and we're happy to answer them, to provide clarity to neighbors and to residents out there if they want to know what's going on. But there is a certain level of privacy involved with building permit applications and certain development permit applications as well.
Yeah, the whole foundation of professional reliance is based on transparency, though. So I guess that you're going to stick with the thing that we have to go through a freedom of information request before we can actually review those professional reports.
Okay. Is there any follow-up?
Yeah, I have another question. What's the difference between natural boundaries and high water?
Staff, please respond.
Thank you. We have a definition of natural boundary that's in the zoning bylaw. We don't define natural boundary in the OCPs. But it's essentially where the continuous action of the water makes it that natural vegetation cannot grow. So it's essentially where the, and I'm paraphrasing here, don't quote me on it, we do have it in the the October twenty twenty-two draft in zoning bylaw, but it's essentially where the the natural vegetation will stop. And that's where we've been measuring our practice has been to measure the development permit areas from the natural boundary of the lake and not from the highest high water point. And what these amendments will do is to clarify that fact in the amended OCPs to ensure that wherever we measure a boundary from the water, it's always from the the present natural boundary and not from the high watermark, which can get confusing at a a lake where the seasonal fluctuations are large.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the first time? Okay, Chair recognizes you.
Craig Bowerman, nine five eight seven Sprout Place. So what I'm understanding is that prior or currently, we would have to require a biologist to do a report on any works within the fifteen meters of this boundary. And what this is going to push us to now is to have a report within thirty meters. So it's adding, it's virtually making any development on Sprout Lake require that permit. I'm just stating that and kind of seconding Mark's issue there, but it's really making it a lot more work for everybody and more onerous on people. And another question I have is intent on changing from a minor major to a minor to a major stream. I'm not quite clear on that. Can you explain that to us?
Yeah, certainly. So when we did the previous, like all the community plans in twenty twelve, there was a lot of discussion around what the what the designation for Sprout Lake should be. So Great Central Lake, the Soma, Stamp, Sprout Rivers are all major streams and waterways. And the others, other streams within the Alberni Valley were considered minor. There was concerns from the community about the development permit area. It was first being introduced to Sprout Lake. We've had it in other areas, but not at Sprout Lake. And so that was why Sprout Lake was designated a minor water course and waterway. And I mean, it is a significant lake with significant development. It was just a matter of, it was worded that way so that the development permit area was remained at fifteen meters rather than thirty meters. And I just, I do want to reiterate what Alex has already mentioned too, that development permits are not no-build areas. It's just they're areas that are sensitive. You know, in this case environmentally sensitive, and it's balancing, you know, people's rights to build on their properties and just to ensure that the proper environmental protections are in place. So a development permit, you know, in most cases, it's a biologist. If it's a riparian area, assesses the property, determines how construction should happen, what heads of replanting should take place, what trees, et cetera, can be removed or should remain. So it's that balance between protecting the natural environment and allowing people to utilize their property.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the first time? Okay, okay, I see Nancy Harvey. Chair recognizes you. Can you, oh, there you are.
Okay. So I have.
Name and address, please.
Nancy Harvey, one oh eight six two Taylor Arm Drive.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a delay here, so I'm not sure if I'm over talking.
You're doing good. Just, you can proceed at any time.
So my first thing is about process. I understand the announcement in two newspapers. Unfortunately, we've had and with with our major storm event, the second newspaper was not delivered to the majority of Sprout Lake area, so that was a failure.
Okay, thank you. How would we find that out? And is that a?
I think at this stage, we just receive the information. I'm not disputing what Nancy Harvey's saying.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we'll receive that for information. Is there a follow-up, Nancy? Not sure if you're cutting out or if you can reconnect, we'll come back to you. This time, I'll ask if there's anybody else who has any first comments. Chair recognizes you. Name and address, please.
Brad West, one zero two four two Sterling Arm Crescent. And I was just wondering, riparian areas for other lakes on the other side of the hump, is it typically thirty meters for a developed lake like this? Or is it relaxed?
Can staff respond to that?
I know some, I don't know all of the OCPs throughout the other side. I know some would have thirty meters depending on the size and is how the stream or lake is rated. But it does vary from area to regional district to regional district, community, municipality, is different in different areas.
And just to build on that, I think, Mike, but the riparian area protection regulation is a provincial regulation that has been applied to a a various, and I know all of the regional districts, at least the majority of them, and the Bay to South Island have that, and that sets a minimum standards for what the biologist assessment needs to look like. And it has a vetting process that goes through the province. That regulation has not been applied to the ACRD, so we have a bit more flexibility in how we can administer our development perimeter guidelines and all of that. And I hear from the staff in those regional districts that it can be more onerous to go through that that riparian area protection regulation. So, you know, I think at the staff over here, we're happy with the process we have, and we do we do recognize that, you know, the extending it from fifteen meters to thirty meters will have an impact on the number of development permit application that are required. But, you know, in our conversations with the community association at the beginning of all of this and throughout with the public is that protection of the water quality and the natural environment of the lake is paramount. So that's, this is a tool that we have in the toolbox that allows us to do that.
Thank you. Is there follow-up? Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Joe Monerfe.
Yes, Joe Monerfe from one zero zero one six Sterling Arm Crescent. The term riparian damage comes up a lot. And all of the landowners are being held a lot responsible for everything that happens on the edge of the lake. I'm just wondering if the regional district should be perhaps looking at engaging more support to protect the lake from the damages that are done from people that don't live at the lake. And I'm not saying that we're not all, we're all innocent, but there's an awful lot of riparian damage being done by visitors to the lake who are creating large wash and camping on the edges of the lake and using public land or land that's owned by large corporations like Mosaic. And is there any way that the regional district is incorporating any other society, the Ministry of Environment or the RCMP or the Fisheries to to take an interest in what's happening on the lake, on the surface of the lake, instead of putting it all on the owners of the lake waterfront owners?
Can staff respond?
And this is a little bit outside the scope of the OCP, but I think it's a good and important question. So staff and the ACRD in general, but specifically by the enforcement staff do work regularly with both Ministry of Environment, Conservation Officers and the Park and Fisheries and Oceans on a case-by-case basis, you know, where there's concerns. So that is something that where there, where there's concerns. So that is something that, that we do. And the other, the other part of your question comments is, is around the limited jurisdiction, or the lack of jurisdiction that the local government has over forestry operations on crown or private property, but over crown, crown land or federal land. And so in those instances, we are, we are working, you know, we have to work with the province or the federal government, and provide recommendations, but enforcement, we don't enforce on, against the province or federal government. And that's, that's a challenge. But we, we do, we do work closely, and I know that, and the staff, the directors, and Director Kotay, are regularly bringing those concerns forward as well.
Thank you. Is there?
I appreciate the answer, and thank you. It also just takes us full circle to somewhat what Mr. Marley has said about the jurisdiction over the surface of the lake. At one point, we're taking claim to, to rule everything that's being done. And on the other hand, we're passing it off, saying, well, another jurisdiction, or another body should be looking after the surface of the lake. And I, I'm just wondering how we're going to coordinate it so that we all work together for what it is, instead of just the ACRD calling all the shots.
Thank you. Anybody want to respond to that?
It just, as, as far as within this OCP, the context, the development permit guidelines that are in place, the regional district does have the ability to, to implement and adopt development permit guidelines. We have had them, for example, in Banfield for a number of years, where, where docs, where the development permits apply to docs or any other works that's done over the surface of the water. And, and, you know, we again regularly issue development permits for new dock construction or replacement in Banfield in grappling lines.
Thank you. So is there any further first comments from anyone, questions? Anyone who believes that their interest in property is affected by this bylaw? This is your opportunity to have your voice heard.
Chair Kotay, there's a message in the chat that I just texted to Alex he could read out from Nancy Harvey.
Thank you. I was just going to do that. So Nancy Harvey said in the chat, what is the background to the change from fifteen to thirty-meter requirement? Is there a middle ground as this change is significant to future, to future uses, I'm thinking she's saying? So, you know, we, we talked a little bit about that, that, you know, there, there are other rivers and, and lakes within the OCP area that have the thirty-meter requirement right now. That's the basis for, for going to, to thirty meters. That's where the number comes from. You know, when, when we look at provincial guidelines for development adjacent to, to, you know, significant water bodies, whether it be a river or, or a lake that provides drinking water, and in many cases, to a lot of the residents, you know, that, that thirty-meter number keeps coming up. And that's the basis that we went from. You know, is there a middle ground as this change can be significant? You know, that's, we have the ability to do so. But I think that applying the rules consistently between Great Central Lake and Spro Lake, as well as between the Sol Mass Stamp, and the Ash Rivers, you know, there's benefit to doing that. And it, it provides certainty and clarity for builders and developers within the region, which is one of the ultimate goals of the project.
Thank you. I don't see anybody's hand up there. Is there anybody else? Is there anybody that would like to speak for the first time? Is there, you can sit at the table or up at the?
Hi, everybody. My name is Zach Barley. I live at one zero two four two Central Lake Road. I just have a comment more so on the, regarding the fifteen to thirty-meter riparian area, or natural boundary increase. I think it's important to remember and recognize that, you know, to implement something, it's kind of like what Nancy Harvey said about changing something so quickly, in a sense, fifteen to thirty meters is significant increase. And even though it's for the benefit of the lake, and everything like that, we also have to take a step back and think about the repercussions it's going to have on the lakes of time it takes to get permitting. You know, there's a certain amount of resources that are already strapped as it is right now. And if you try and get a biologist on site, it takes three weeks to a month, like, way it is. If you start increasing stuff overnight, shouldn't say overnight, but it's fifty, fifty meters is a big change. Pretty much everything we do, New Island Exploration Company, we do a lot of stuff around the lake, you know, in dealing with building and whatnot, is within that, that zone. So it's going to put a really high demand and task on the biologists. You know, there's only so many of them around. I think it's something to be considered anyways, that, you know, you guys know how much more work it's going to cost yourselves, included. But I just think it's important to recognize that.
Great. Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak for the first time that hasn't yet? Not seeing anyone. Mr. Marley?
Well, my name and address, Mark Marley, eleven thousand Central Lake Road. Mike, to touch on your comments. So just to be clear, we're creating a thirty-meter development permit zone, but only upon the lands that have developers on it. So ninety-five percent of Great Central Lake is owned by the timber company or Crown. I'm not sure percentage of it is Spro Lake, but it's probably pretty high as well. So Mosaic doesn't have to get a development permit. They can log right down to virtually the edge of the lake, where they have to only leave a percentage of trees, not a setback. So, you know, you say that you don't have jurisdiction over logging, but if it's truly to protect the waters, you need to get that. If you're going to force this upon your residents, you need to force it upon your corporations as well.
Thank you. Would you like to?
I can certainly respond, because I think that's a, that's a valid point. And it's, it's a provincial issue, right? And regional districts are created by the province, and we, you know, the regional district operates under the Local Government Act, one of the acts they operate under. And it specifically prohibits forestry. It's, it's not that I disagree with you. It's not the board disagrees with you. It's just the legislation that we have to, have to work under. So I think that's a good comment. And I would encourage you to contact your MLA. And I know the board has, has done that. This is something that the province, that other local governments have done, because they are concerned exactly about those things. If there was other things happening, you know, private, or if there's private lease areas, say for recreational use in a development permit area, then even if it was on crown land, the development permit area applies, right? So I go back to Banfield, where, where it's, you know, it's an area of, the province regulates what types of docks can go over and crown leases over, over the bed of the lake. But the development permit is still applied because it's private. The upland property owner has that, that area to use or lease. So that's, that's when the development permit applies. So that clarifies it a little bit.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Chris Law.
Chris Law, one zero six nine three, Tilly Road. Yeah, I was just looking at the Riparian Areas Protection Regulation, the provincial regulation, and it lists all the regional districts that this applies to. And I actually sent a letter to our MLA, Josie Osborne's office, and asked, because she's heading up the new ministry that sort of covers this. And I asked her why the Albany Claybar Regional District wasn't covered by this regulation. And she said that they first initiated this regulation on areas that were under higher development, but they are actually looking to expand it. So if the regional district doesn't put this in, there's chances are the province is going to expand this regulation to cover the ACRD also. And in the regulations, the provincial regulations, it is thirty meters on either side of streams. So it's, it's a blanket thirty meters. It's not, it's sort of what everybody else is dealing with and has had to deal with.
Thank you for that, Chris. Okay, at this time, is there any person who would like to speak for the second time? Great. Chair recognizes you.
So within this thirty-meter area, if, not only would it be required for a building permit, but for any type of works, if you wanted to build an outland block wall, or a garden bed, or a pergola, or a, any one of those items, it wouldn't be triggered by a building permit. If it was any activities within that area, would I be correct on that?
Yes, yeah. In, in general, the, the OCP does provide a list of exemptions that would be exempt from that. And that's the biggest one that, that would apply to what you're talking about there is, is maintaining existing landscaping and existing vegetation. So if it's, you know, existing retaining walls that you're shoring up, or, or, you know, you're, you're repairing, then there are exemptions for that. There's exemptions for removal of the basic species, for planting of native species, stream enhancement, things like that. There's also exemptions for hump houses up to nine point two square meters at, at the lake, and exemptions for pathways that are one meter in width, that are on non-permeable surfaces. So essentially, if you're going to gravel or dirt pathway that's one meter wide, from your lawn down to your dock, you, you know, anything over above that that might involve structural stairs or something, that would, the expectation was that would, would require a development permit. And we often handle those, handle a number of those every year with the, the access to the foreshore through the fifteen-meter zone.
Right. So I just want to make sure the public is aware of that. All our neighbors and friends on the lake, it really makes it onerous to do any of those types of things in that area.
Thank you for that. So the public, public hearing minutes will be available, as well as the recording on the ACRD website. So you can direct people to, to find out that information there, or call staff. Okay, at this time, is there anybody else who would like to make comment? For first or second time, or a third time? Okay, all right. Listen to the public presentations, and staff and the applicant, you are the applicant, or have responded to comments. So this time, I'll say, please be advised that members of the Board of Directors cannot receive new information related to this bylaw between the end of this hearing and making a final decision on the bylaw. If any board member does so, the hearing could be invalidated, and would have to be held again. So at this time, with that in mind, does anyone have any final comments? All right. I'm not hearing anything. So I'm calling for the first time. Oh, I should ask online if there was anybody with any final. No. Okay, not seeing anything, and no comments in the chat. Okay, great, thank you. So a call for the first time. Are there any further representations on this bylaw for the first time? I call for a second time, for any further representations on this bylaw. I call for a third time, for any further representations on this bylaw. Hearing no further comments, I declare this meeting terminated. Thank you.